To everyone taking these, obviously, none of you guys, but any student listening. And another upcoming event is the junior and senior prom at the Sheridan and Valley Forge. And there's gonna be food and dancing, so I'm really looking forward to it. And it's coming up. And it's also coming to the end of the year for seniors. And there's a lot of events coming up for them. So they have their senior trip at Six Flags, some senior breakfast, awards and awards and scholarship night, as well as actual graduation, along with many more. And another fun event from Wissahican High School's Indian Cultural Association was a holy event. And although it was rainy, a lot of students enjoyed celebrating the festival of spring and color, as well as a lot of delicious Indian food. And I want to give a shout out to the Wissahican Computer Club, who participated in a cyberquest competition. And that was just encouraging students to go into fields of cybersecurity. And Wissahican sent a lot of teams to compete in this competition. And a team of five of our students actually did win first place. And then Wissahican's Ultimate Frisbee Club also did really well this year. And they're at a final ranking of 10th in the nation. They competed in Washington DC at a two-day event with 42 other high schools, and then placed third out of the pool of 20. And then the last event we have coming up on Friday is Mini-Thon. And we've actually raised about $18,000 so far. Our goal is 50,000. And we're donating that for childhood cancer. And I look forward to all of these events and anything else in the future.
Thanks so much, Saachi. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Saachi, you mentioned that Mini-Thon is coming up. Is there a way that outsiders can contribute online or by other means?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there's Wissahican's Four Diamonds. I'm not sure of the exact website, but I can get it sent somewhere to you guys. There's a fundraiser online that we have running for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much, Saachi. You got a great report. Now we will move on to our next presentation, which is the Achievement Gap.
Yes. Thank you so much. I'm actually have a confession to make that we're actually, before we commence the Achievement Gap report, there's been a little trickery at work here tonight. And it's time now to say why that is. Don't look at me like that. You're not the boss of me anymore. We, a couple of years ago instituted something that's called the Wiss Nation Hero Award, which is presented annually to somebody in the community or in the school district who goes above and beyond, maybe under the radar, for doing things for kids. There's a plaque that exists out where, 2017, you may know Mr. Lenny Robinson. He made it his lifetime goal to help students of Ambler in many, many ways. And 2018, Eva Bryan was recognized in this room for all the works he does to make sure the students, particularly in Ambler, have enough to eat all the time, including over the summers, which was awesome. And then in 2019, in this room, right before things got dicey, we recognized Robin Betterly for her work with the Boys and Girls Club. You recall, she brings the fresh fruit and food to the club, shows the kids how to cook it for their parents. And then she sends them home with the same exact bag so they can cook it again at home. So her commitment to kids is awesome. And we had to take some years off because we weren't here and we didn't want to do this. So we're gonna get caught up, and there's a new name on this. 2020 says Tina Durkosh.
Woo-hoo!
This has been, I've been looking forward to this moment for a long time, believe me. So when I first got here, Ms. Durkosh took me under her wing immediately. Everybody here knows her for various different ways. She made me feel like I belong. Now, I'm a kid, kinda. And she even offered me her dictation skills, her shorthand skills, which were amazing. I never took advantage. I didn't know how, but I wish I did. And then, way more importantly, she always reminded me. She always kept me grounded when we had a tough situation or we had something, decision to make. What's the best thing for kids? I can remember her saying that multiple times. But just do the what's right for kids. And that always helped me. She was at that point helping me try to help kids. I have a couple of people here tonight who you might recognize. We're gonna say a few words about Tina and just her incredible commitment to kids everywhere. So first, I'd like to reintroduce and re-welcome Dr. Gary Ammon to this room.
Good evening, everyone. It's really nice to be back in this, what I consider to be home, away from home. And I will say that to come back for this particular occasion is even extra special. We know that in any organization, there are those who are onstage, and there are those who backstage. And in this particular case, we're gonna celebrate someone who has a backstage role, but who wore many, many hats in one singular position. And I must say, her contributions to Wissahican over the years has woven so much into the fabric of this community. And she is to be credited with a lot that has taken place. Now Tina has worn many, many hats here. And I'm just gonna mention a few of them that sort of resonated with me over the years. First, what a historian we have in our midst. Tina is the one person you could call upon at any moment. And you'd say, "Do you remember when?" Or, "Can you tell me about this?" And she knew exactly what happened, and she was like a running encyclopedia. So definitely a historian for us. She was tremendously resourceful and always reminded that Tina's computer desktop was something to behold. Her desktop was more complete and full. In fact, she had several desktops. She just had to keep sliding them because they kept going on forever. But the beauty of that was, I always had things in folders. I could find everything easily. But Tina, she could have a thousand things open, and she could go right to the right screen, right to the right file, and knew exactly where it was quickly. She was a computer, kind of an IT specialist of a different kind. She was a tremendous coordinator. She definitely rounded up all of us cats and made sure that she was able to get the agendas ready each month for these meetings. And she was relentless in that, I'll just tell you. When I first came over here as Assistant Superintendent, I could always rely on Tina coming in to remind me of my agenda items needing to be ready and ready to go. She was tremendous with calendar. She wore the calendar hat. And forming a district calendar is no easy task. And Tina really helped keep that going and make sure we were on the money with that. Hospitality, boy. You know, I was at Stony Creek as principal before I came over to the board office. And I will say that Tina really was a welcoming person. She brought her, sell her friendship to the table. She was there every day to greet me. We had lots of great conversations, but she was always there to be supportive and just let me know how much she was there to help and to make sure I had a smooth transition over here. She's a people person. And so she had relationships throughout the building and throughout the district, people who knew her well, and people in the community as well. She was a good listener. She would listen to all of our tales of war. And she was also a "let's get this done" hat kind of girl, too. She really didn't want to see things wasted. Let's get things going. Let's get things happening. And last, she also had a great advisor hat. She was often the one, as Jim said, to say, "You know, you might want to think about this, or you might want to think about that." And it was her very, very subtle and ginger way of saying, "Maybe you're not going in the right direction on this." Or just do it. There you go. So, yeah, so Tina wore many hats. And there's no question that she had an unwavering commitment to the reputation of Wissahican School District and worked tirelessly to ensure that this district shone every single day and throughout its history. She did everything she could to make sure Wissahican was recognized for all the good things that it did and had a wonderful reputation. But I have to say, the last piece, that the hat she wore the best was probably her family hat. And we know that family means everything to Tina. And this evening, we want to thank her family for sharing Tina with us for so many years. So hats off to you, Tina Durkosh. What an asset you've been to Wissahican. And we couldn't have been more thrilled to be a part of your journey here with us.
It was very hard to capture such a career in so few words. But Gary, thank you for coming back and doing that. And the other person we have tonight is somebody who is very familiar with Tina's commitment to kids. And he's our own Mike Banny, who you've seen around here, who makes this building run and our meetings run efficiently. So, Mike?
I'm the guy that chooses it behind the scenes. I am getting the board meetings ready and closing up the building. But tonight, I feel honored and privileged to be here because about two weeks ago, Dr. Chris Field and Katie came up to me and said, "Hey, Mike, gotta do us a favor." I was like, "Yeah, what's that?" And they're like, "We want to bring Tina. We're gonna have Tina Durkosh come back here." And I was like, "Wow, really?" I was like, "I haven't seen her in two years, but worked with her for 19 years." So I was glad to hear that, and they wanted me to say a few words. Now Gary kind of tied her professional career together here. And I want to talk about Tina. She did a lot of community service work. And I got to see that firsthand because I actually worked with her in 2014. And I gave five years of my volunteer service helping the children. I want to take you for a heartfelt ride with her commitment to community service. And when I mean ride, we're talking about trucks for Maddox. I got to know Tina, and Trucks for Maddox is very dear to her heart. It's in memory of her late grandson, whose name was Maddox. And Maddox was a lovable little boy who loved to play with toy construction trucks. And at a young age of two years old, he was always willing to share, which is very unique for a child. And Trucks for Maddox was started by her son, Jason, and her steward-in-law, Liz, in Pittsburgh. In 2013, in loving memory of their son, they decided to give back to disadvantaged children. And by doing that, they decided, since Maddox loved trucks, let's collect trucks. And it just happened to be that Christmas was coming up. And they decided to collect trucks. And it was so overwhelming. People just came from all over the suburbs, Pittsburgh, and they just filled the place up with trucks. And they collected 4,500 trucks. That's amazing. First year. That was 2012. And 2013, Tina and Durkosh decided to do something here in Philadelphia. And so she started, her and her husband Bill. They set up a campaign, and they got these drop, big white drop boxes and put them up at the high school. There was one in the cafe. They were all over town. And we collected some more trucks. So 2014, I hopped on board. I said, "Tina, I'd like to really help you because I work for a church, and I know a lot of people in the northeast area. That's where I'm from, Fox Chase. And I can really get some trucks for you." "Oh, no, Mike, you don't have to do that. Yeah, that's okay. Just bring a truck or two in yourself." "Well, appreciate that." "No, no, I want to really help you." So she gave me a couple of boxes, labels, tape. So I take these big humongous boxes. I place them in the different buildings, chiropractor office, three churches, diner. And I'm like, "Okay, let's see how this goes." So all of a sudden, I go back to the diner, the church. "Hey, Mike, we got a lot of trucks. They're filling up." And that was getting me all psyched up. So... So we did good, right, Tina? The first year I come in here with 55 trucks, and I was like, "I'm gonna do better next year, Tina." "No, Mike, we appreciate whatever you have." So the next year, I really got onto my game. I went to the minister at the Methodist Church, and I said, "Pastor, can I have a pancake breakfast?" He says, "Yeah, yeah, but for what?" And I said, "I'm gonna do something special for kickoff for this Trucks for Maddox at the church." And I thought, "A pancake breakfast? People bring the trucks in, they get free pancakes, sausage, juice, coffee. What a deal." So they came, brought trucks. And this year, I was like, "Oh, my goodness, the trucks were flowing." I had to ask Tina for another box or two. So we did good. That was in 2017. So in 2017, there was over 8,000 trucks collected, which is really great in Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. So I just want to share this with you in closing. The primary goal of Trucks for Maddox is to bring smiles to disadvantaged children by gifting toy trucks to multiple charities on an annual basis. The idea was based on Maddox's love of construction vehicles and his passion to share everything he had with his friends. His parents felt only fitting to give to others in memory of their son. The simple request prompted a unexpected and incredibly overwhelming outpour of trucks that... I think I'm gonna read it, glasses. inadvertently transformed into a nonprofit organization, which was Trucks for Maddox, a charitable trust. It is the desire of Maddox's family to continue this cause while honoring Maddox and keeping his spirit alive. And I just have something I want to show you. This is the logo, which Tina gave me for all my work, and I wear proudly. That was the logo. And the front, it says Trucks for Maddox. So I wore this at every event that I would go to. Speaking of events, Trucks for Maddox had a touch-a-truck event where the kids would climb on the trucks, beat the horn, get the photographs taken. They also have a skating event on Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, morning skate. $10 off. You just bring a toy truck. And here's a big one, all you golf fans. They have a golf annual event every year in Pittsburgh where Tina's son lives. And donations come in and money, and it all goes to the charity. And then my pancake breakfast, and then all the drop boxes. And we had a bowling event. So you can see, this is a very beautiful thing that's happening in our communities. And I'm excited to, I was excited to find out that Tina told me there was a new giving, the gift of clear vision eyeglasses, where you see Maddox's trademark were eyeglasses that he always wore. So the parents in 2020 decided to, besides the toy trucks, let's collect eyeglasses for parents to help their kids with their eyesight. So in closing, I just want to read real quick some of the charities that we donated to. Pittsburgh Children's Hospital, of course, Interfaith for the Homeless here in Ambler, Children's Hospital Chop and Philadelphia, Safe Place Center for Child Protection Health, Caribob's Pediatric Center, Laurel House, Mattie Dixon Community Cup Board, Montgomery County Office of Children and Youth, Children's Home in Reading, PA, North Penn Valley Boys and Girls, the Daley Bread Community Pantry, and many more. And I probably don't even have the whole full list. But thank you, Tina. You deserve this night, this night of recognition. And everybody in this room, thanks you. Most important of all, the children, those thousands of children that were given this gift of toys around the holidays, thank you. And somewhere up there in heaven, I know Maddox thanks you. So with that said, congratulations, Tina, for your hard community work.
All right. So Mike, thank you, and Gary, thank you so much. I think those actions speak louder than the words. The, all of these, these, shall we say, commitments on her part and these heartfelt gestures landed here in Wiss Nation, in addition to Pittsburgh. So think about that. How many kids here in Wiss Nation are the beneficiaries of this generosity? So for that reason, Tina Durkosh is our 2020 recipient of the Wiss Nation Hero Award. I would probably get a talking to if I made her come up and say a few words. Would you like to? You don't have to. I will move, I know I'm in trouble. I'm already in trouble, so I'm gonna get in more trouble.
Thank you very much. I am truly honored. Really. Thank you.
You'll note, and you won't be surprised, that she ran out of here. As much as she is committed to the district, she is not committed to public speaking or public venues. So it took a great deal of trickery and dishonesty to get her here tonight. Okay, so the real presentation tonight is the requested update on the Achievement Gap that the board asked for. This is not a replacement of or for the annual report we have in January. But we realize there's some new faces. There's some representations made in social media and elsewhere about how we do things. So we just thought it would be best to set the record straight and get some facts on the table. It's a brief agenda, just kind of a recap, get around the same page of where things have been, define some things, and share us some ongoing work. Back in 2016, we launched our Achievement Gap 10-Year Attack Plan. And that since has spawned five annual public reports in this venue every January. They change slightly as we learn new things and as we come to new conclusions. But the construct is the same. Also, you may know, we have our, I form the Superintendent Advisory Council, which consists of about 25 or so people from the community, community members, staff members, to help be a conduit of information two ways. They help share with me things they hear in the community. We ask them to be the purveyor of information and facts back to the community. And it's been very, very helpful. And that group, though we haven't met because of the pandemic, we used to meet in person in this room, and we'll get back to doing that very shortly. 2018, we had our, it's a report. These are college reports. We're in this for the long haul. We have to admit, I think one of the keys to the Achievement Gap is nothing is changing overnight. It occurred, and it started through many, many years. So the solution is not going to be a short one. We want to track academics. We have a really good set of 10 indicators, way better than what the state uses for their very narrow view of things. And we track those, again, with a little hiccup on the pandemic. But we're gonna continue. We'll get back on that track very soon. 2020, we just, in this room, we stated the brutal facts. We had, we stated very clearly, we had not made any progress on any indicators since the last time. And we've morphed a little bit from targeted, kind of specific cause analysis to a more root cause analysis. And we've come to realize that in terms of the gap that exists between students of different races at the cities, there's a systemic racism at work here that creates an opportunity gap. Whether it be belongingness, or enrollment AP, or gifted identification, all the things we've talked about, there's an opportunity gap that exists. And so then last, in this past January, our focus was, we need a systemic solution. It's a systemic problem. It's not like, "Okay, we don't know how to teach reading to students of color." That's not it at all. It's lots of different things in the system that need to attention slowly but surely so that the whole thing gets fixed systemically. So in terms here in our district, we look at the Achievement Gap in terms of students from certain demographic groups currently achieving at lower levels than other students. And the semantics are important there. Pennsylvania uses a term that's called HOP, Historically Underperforming Students. This distinction is really, really important. Look at those groups that the state includes in their Achievement Gap analysis. Three groups. They include special education students, students with IPs. They include English learners, and they include students from low-income households. The state does not report out by race or ethnicity. Whenever you hear about the state talking about a district's achievement gap, it does not have to do with race, ethnicity. We want it to here. We want to be very direct in acknowledging the gap and dealing with it head-on. So indicators, we have a really robust set. I'm not gonna go over all 10, but we go, we do use some standardized test scores. But we also use performance in the classroom, like grades on a roll, that kind of thing. And we also include some other things, such as which students are enrolled in AP classes, for example. This is a way better, more robust look at achievement, if you will, or opportunity. The state uses just standardized test scores. There's so much wrong with using just standardized test scores. We don't have enough time tonight to discuss that. But they can, they themselves can be biased, and there's all sorts of test prep that can come in. So while it is an indicator, and we do care about standardized test scores, especially in this week of PSSA starting, we know that there's way more to being a successful student and feeling like you belong and being part of Wiss Nation than just your test scores. Another key is that we are starting, or we have already recognized the difference between academic growth and academic achievement. So those test scores are a snapshot in time, how much you know, on April 26th about math. And if you don't get too proficient by Harvard's measure of the state, okay, then you don't count for a yes. And while we do care about absolute levels of achievement, and Wiss Nation has actually got a really, really good reputation for having our students rise to really incredible levels of achievement, absolutely. We also need to care about growth. What about that student who came to us in grade three very much below basic in, let's just say, math, grade four? And let's say we did great things with that student, and that student's starting to hit his stride, and he's almost at basic. He grew a lot over the year. If we don't give him and us some credit for that growth, we're missing things. He doesn't, he's not just a one or a zero, a yes or a no. He's a, "I grew a lot this year, and I'm gonna continue to grow over the next several years." That's important. And then, I think it's also important to understand the difference between formative and summative assessments. We've spoken about it a little bit in this venue. Our teachers use formative assessment every single day. It's tactical. It could be as simple as a ticket-to-leave slip where you assess, "Did your lesson land today?" That's 24 hours. Or it could be something like the math tests, which are given three times a year. And as soon as we get those results back immediately, that tells us where each... that tells us where each student individually needs to grow. Summative things are at the end of a period, typically a year, like a, think of it like a final exam or a course. Okay, and that's important. It's a strategic thing to see how much you learned over the course of the year. It doesn't help with instruction one bit, because those kids leave the next year. So the formative assessments, and we do use those as part of our indicators, are really, really important. Through our ongoing work, in this presentation about achievement gap and opportunity gap, and our focus on students of color or students from low-income households, we first want to make it very clear about, though, coming out of the pandemic, our order of business is each and every one of our students. There's a lot of things that need to get back on the right track. A lot of needs academically, socially, emotionally, and that matters to us. So all of our students matter as our first priority right now. From there, we have curriculum and program improvements, multi-tiered system support is sort of like a way to not immediately dump a student into special education, but meet their needs prior to that. That's important. We've spoken about foundations in this room. That's going to be a reading improvement. We've audited our curriculum for make sure it's inclusive and make sure that all students receive themselves reflected in their textbooks and in their curriculum and in their classroom conversations. We've done work on identifying our students who might be gifted in a more inclusive way there. There's a lot of curriculum and program improvements that we're working on. And then, just as importantly, if not more so now, is social-emotional learning. We have a steering committee set up for that. It's been a little bit on hiatus during the pandemic. We're returning this month. We have gone to professional development on things like restorative practices. We've infused SEL throughout the entire day, all day. It's not a standalone lesson. It's in every bit of the classroom. That everyone feels as though they belong and feels though that their school is a safe and comfortable place to be. If you don't have that, then it doesn't matter what you do with curriculum and program. You're not getting any learning. Staffing matters. An incredible amount of work has gone into making sure that, as best we can, our staff, our teaching staff mirrors the demographics of our student body. We're not there yet. We have said as much in this room very clearly that we have work to do. We've also been very proud of the progress we're making. That's hard. And by the way, Jeff and everyone can tell you that every single district has this problem, and it's a challenge, and we're just going to work at it. We value that. We recruit and hire. And then once we get teachers here, we retain and support them. And then, as I said, annually, in the annual report, we'll share out how we did over the preceding 12 months. Our DEI work, diversity, equity, inclusion, we have a sustained, multi-year professional development commitment to taking people on their own personal journey, wherever they start, no judging, just get up, but you just better start moving. You need to move. We need to all grow, learn about things like implicit bias, how it might be affecting your teaching, your classroom, your district leadership, and how it might create hurdles for student learning. This is really, really important. And this is not a one-and-done professional development thing. It's a multi-year, multi-session commitment. And then lastly, this thing about belongingness. Now, I'm going to share a little bit with the belongingness survey in a second, but we believe that, we've kind of believed that this gets to the systemic kind of level where a sense of belonging has got to be in place first. Otherwise, we're never going to close the gap to the extent we want to. And that goes for students and staff. We fail them. If they feel as though they are not valued or they do not belong in West African schools, we need that feeling of belongingness. We're working on that. Now, the recent survey, we administered in February. We're not going to go over all the details right now. We have posted the details on our website or will tomorrow. People can view them. There's lots of questions, and you can see how the responses went. For tonight, the responses were very minimal in terms of race, ethnicity differences. But here's the thing. We really need more, we need to do this again, which we will, and we need to do better at how the survey was administered, what survey instrument was used, and perhaps most importantly, how we engage some people to interpret a very sophisticated instrument. We didn't, we've learned some things, lessons learned. We didn't set it up as much as we could have in the classroom. We didn't like the how and when you took it, maybe even the why. We'll get better at that. And then, and we're going to eventually seek to include families in the survey as well. That's a pretty big next step. We're trying to really lock down first the school step, but ultimately, we want to have families be involved in that process as well. So in summary, how do we sort of like keep the energy going? We have a sense of urgency. These things take time. We are always looking for new strategies and ideas, trying some, dumping the ones that don't work, keeping those that do, talking with colleagues. New strategies, new ideas are good. And we're going to track the progress, and then we'll report it out here openly and honestly and publicly. So that's the summary of it. It's not, again, it's not an annual report. All of our annual reports are on the website. Anyone's welcome to see the results by indicator. I'm going to tell you, we haven't closed the gap on any of them yet, but we're going to. What questions might you have?
I'll start, I guess. What a lot of people are going to hear is the sense of frustration that you feel, that they feel, that you noted at the beginning that this is a 10-year attack plan that started in 2016. In 2020, there was an acknowledgement that that hadn't narrowed, and then we had a pandemic, which means it could widen simply because of that. So from my perspective, when you talk about things like academic growth or belongingness, these seem like data points to a certain extent. And while it does take time and there is a sense of urgency, what are the data points you are going to be looking for at the next annual report to see whether we in fact are starting to change the cycle to not necessarily completely close the achievement gap, but to start the process of getting people to understand that we're trying to trend in the right direction, because it is going to take time. So specifically, are there data points that you're looking at the next time around?
Yes, thank you. The answer is yes. Our indicators are, we're purposely chosen to span grade levels. It starts at grade three, which is our local assessment of reading. Grade four is our local assessment of math facts mastery. Grade five, off the top of my head, I think we go to PSSA scores. Grade six might be honor roll. I'm not sure about these, but they'll go from GPA, how you did on the SAT practice, PSAT, if you're enrolled in an AP class. So we'll track all of those. Some of them might not be quite as applicable coming off of a pandemic. I would say that of those, the grade three reading indicator and the grade four math facts mastery are the ones that would concern me the most, because if a student is behind in reading early on, then that just sets the stage for more gaps later. So of our 10 indicators, I would pick those two.
What about in terms of belongingness? What types of indicators are you looking for there?
So we don't have indicators of belongingness. I think that's a really good point, that what we intended the survey to do would be an annual tracker of that, because belongingness really is about how you feel. So we'll use this year's survey as a baseline and make the improvements that we spoke of next year. And then annually, we'll just track to make sure that not only is the tide rising for everybody feeling like they belong more than they do now, but also that there are no gap. We didn't perceive a gap out of this year's results. The flaws in the survey and the lessons we learned, I think I'd rather reserve judgment on any gaps in belongingness until this time next year, when we can share the better survey results.
Jim, just to follow up on Marshall's question, you mentioned grade three, the reading assessment with students. Like I know at least one of the elementary schools, we had a company after-school program, because we did not have a teacher to run that program. Are the other elementaries continuing to do that program?
So our approach to reading would be this. We want to, as soon as we can, identify students who are still emerging readers. And we have now a very good formative assessment map in addition to, the indicator uses the DIBELS results, which can be done actually in the second grade, also begin in the third grade. We want to have the reading, if you will, remediation or catching up be land squarely during the school day. We don't want that to be an extra, and we don't, our approach is not to have it be something that we need to tack on, but rather integrate into all-day behavior, even if it's in science. There's a very good school of thought that says you can teach reading with science, textbooks and science passages and whatnot. Every teacher is responsible for teaching reading all the time. And things like the foundations curriculum is going to help us with perceived short falls in grammar, maybe, or coding, decoding. There's ways that we can get at the teaching of reading that don't require the after-school boost. However, it's nice to have an after-school boost for identified students if they're able to come and willing to come, and if we have skilled teachers able to help us with that program. So those are three ifs that have to come into place. We'll provide the after-school activities now and in the future as often as we can, given those limitations.
And then the belongingness survey, when do you anticipate sending the next one out? Next school year?
Yes, next school year. We need to give people a little bit of time to disassociate this one from that one, otherwise we'll have survey burnout. Possibly late fall. We haven't really finalized that yet. I don't know. Dr. Dewan is with us tonight. Dr. Dewan, do you have a better sense of that? Is it late fall or winter? What do you think?
That is correct, late fall.
I have a question about, I'm sorry, Amy, are you done? I said one more question. I mentioned you talk to other colleagues. Have you heard like what other districts are trying? Like, we're not the only district that has this issue, and obviously they're also trying things, but they're failing out, and maybe there's some things they're succeeding. Like, what things are you hearing that other districts are doing that are working, that we haven't tried yet?
Part of the challenge of this whole initiative and this whole driving sort of goal is that you can never really put your finger on what exactly worked. You have to try a host of things, and then you see if something worked, or maybe the combination of those things worked. So we do speak often with colleagues, the one example that comes to mind is ways to infuse SEL into the entire day. So some colleagues will say, well, we have this program, and it's nice, but it takes up 30 minutes every other day, and that means we have that much less time for reading and math. So we talk about that. Well, that's not what we want. We have this way that we can introduce routine in the morning to get kids welcome, feeling welcome and settled and kind of ready to learn. And maybe a wrap-up at the end, so you're not losing so much curriculum time, yet you're injecting a feeling of belonging and comfort both right when they get here and before they leave. Those things, we can hypothesize that they work. We'll never be able to say that, yep, and we did those, and then all of a sudden our gap closed by two percentage points. But we can assess whether or not students feel like they belong, and hopefully that results in, but in turn, results in closing the gap.
All right, thank you. Diane?
So my question was, we're collecting this data on belongingness, but what strategies do we plan to use to increase belongingness? Do we have any of those?
We do. I don't know. Dr. Dewan, you want to share? You and I were discussing this today, and I think you might be a little more versed in these.
Yes, thank you. You know, many of the strategies are going to work in concert. So when we think about the efforts around social and emotional learning and the impact that that will have on a student's sense of belonging is in the research to show that that will have a positive impact on that sense of belonging. Our efforts in looking at restorative practices, ensuring that relationships are at the foundation in all of our classrooms, those are things that are going to, hopefully, and we anticipate positively, impact the sense of belonging for students. In thinking about across our school day, ensuring that there's voice and choice in the classroom, and the instructional strategies that teachers will employ throughout the day can also help to affect the sense of belonging. So, you know, again, it's a layered approach in thinking about the many ways that we can ensure that we're looking at, how are we having students to think about themselves and understand how valued they are, having their voices be heard, having opportunities to connect with not only their teachers, but also their peers. So there are so many different things in terms of those strategies, but those are just a few that I could mention off the top of my head here.
I had a few things. Thanks for the overview. Appreciate it and totally get that we need to look at quantitative and qualitative elements and how interwoven all these aspects are of education. First question, for the social-emotional piece, what, and we don't need to solve for it today, but I would love to see a presentation about what we're doing from that perspective. I do feel that with the pandemic, that might have also widened the gap and want to understand what we have in place, what we're trying to achieve. How do we help our students feel, you know, socially and emotionally, you know, balanced?
How would May 2nd be for a very comprehensive presentation on that?
Say that again?
May 2nd?
May 2nd, got it. And then I know that we talked about this before, and today was just an overview, but I do feel strongly, and I will say it again, that maybe a once-a-year update is not enough and that more than just an overview was kind of what I was hoping we would get. Like, we would actually get data points or data inputs or something for us to be like, we're tracking well, we're not tracking well here, we need to do this. So I was kind of hoping for a little bit more, and I will continue to hope to see that. And then I understand third grade is a critical year, but I also have read that K through 2 are pretty important. If you miss the gap, if you miss it there, it's kind of hard to catch up. So what are we doing for leading indicators for K1 and 2 so that we don't lose anybody in those critical, critical, early, early, early years? So hope to see some of that.
You raise a very good point. K to 2 grades, very, very important. While they're not on our list of 10 indicators, that series of formative assessments we spoke about are incredibly valuable for younger students. You don't really need to, I mean, it's just to inform the instruction in a first-grade classroom, say. Test-taking is like an extended period of time is a little questionable, but teachers are really skilled at very short snippets of formative assessments to know, okay, Johnny's got those sounds down, but might need help over here. So he goes in this small group today. That assessment was administered 24 hours ago. It's fresh, and it's also relevant. It's his A scores were administered in that grade. It doesn't, the example doesn't exist, but forever at K to 2, we're always doing formative assessments and molding instruction accordingly.
Also, before kids even get into kindergarten, when they're registering, we already know who's going to need extra help, because they're put through a little bit of assessment then. But we catch them early.
We do, and we offer them a free We do, and we offer them a pre-kindergarten summer program to, that's more about socializing than academics. It's barely any academics, but it helps them hit the ground running when they get here in kindergarten to start doing some academic stuff.
Jim, does that point, during our next quarterly report, are there some data points on the list of various data points that we look at that can be shared out, like maybe GPA or one of the other points?
I will look into that. I don't want to say that we would have meaningful quarterly data points. We just, it doesn't, the way this works, there aren't like leading indicators and other things. The leading indicators are the formative assessments that if we asked our teachers to compile all of that and in some reportable form, it would be a lot of work. They use it frequently, but I mean, we could give a report on grades. It's just not going to really, you need the year end grade. The quarterly grades aren't going to matter that much. The PSAT, practice PSAT happens once a year, so that's out. Mastery of math facts. Again, the teachers are constantly assessing that. Asking for a compilation more frequently is going to be a pretty heavy lift. I don't want to lead anyone to think otherwise.
No, I understand that. I guess I understand Zephy's frustration, like carrying it once a year and finding out there wasn't much progress. And then having to wait a whole nother year to find out there wasn't much progress. It'd be great if along the way, we were sort of hearing what's working, what's not working. If there were some data points that we could see midway through the year or even quarterly, if some of this data is available, that it could be shared out with us early. Not that we want anybody to scramble and gather extra information, but things that come out at different points throughout the year. If we could have that data made available to us earlier.
We can try.
Yeah, there's probably a nice array of things that we could probably look at, like percentage of students hitting honor roll. We get that data every marking period. That should be an easy thing. How about how many kids have enrolled in AP programs? That should be readily available by marking, not marking period, but I guess semester. Like I think there's probably easy data points that we can look at just again, so that we can see how things are trending.
We can try.
Jim, regarding data, I think it's less about the availability of data. I think that there's actually like tons of data and all kinds of data. The key is understanding like what are the right kinds of data points to be looking at and which ones make sense. Now, I recognize that some of the student outcome data points we're looking at, let's say like PSAT results or let's say one thing I think is a good example that we've looked at in the racial equity committee is the representation of black students as an example in our gifted population, right? It's like dramatically way below the representation of the general population of students, right? So looking at that annually, that's not going to change a whole lot, right? But we can have some theories about what some of the root causes are for the disproportionate representation and talk about things we're going to do to try to change that dynamic and the representation over time. And the things to monitor is maybe the implementation of those strategies, which then over time, we hope will improve the actual outcome measure. So for example, in the committee, we've talked about one of the barriers being how people are identified for testing into gifted and then actually get placed into gifted. And it's, the process right now is driven either by teacher recommendation, you know, or parents, you know, pressure basically, right? But seeing those two things, those are going to tend to, I think, be biased towards white and more affluent students. And there may be even Asian students. And we see that, I think, in the representation in gifted. So one of the strategies we talked about is like, how do we then make the testing process for identification of gifted, take the human element out of it, make it more objective. And we are implementing this spring universal screening for all students. So it's not reliant again on parent, you know, motivation or pressure or like the teacher recognizing it in a kid. Because we know that white teachers, for example, are more likely to recognize signs of giftedness in other white children and less likely in non-white children. Right? So we know that from research. So again, the strategy was around universal screening for gifted. So this spring we're doing that. We can, weekend number one, check on, did we implement it? How many kids were screened? What are the proportion of kids who got identified and went on for full testing? And did any changes in terms of who's getting admitted or put into the gifted program? And is that happening? So the overall picture, it's going to take years to kind of play out, right? Before we change that overall representation, but in the meantime, we can at least articulate, you know, what we think are the root causes. What's a strategy for trying to address it and tracking our progress and implementing those strategies? And then tracking on, you know, what sort of like implementation data points might lead us to believe that the strategy is working or not. Right? And so that's a different way to think about it. Again, it's not just a bottom line indicator because those things take time to shift and change. But if we're thinking about doing active, we're taking active measures to try to change it, we can at least report on that. And then that's a way, I think, that we as a board can kind of get a peek at progress that doesn't leave us, you know, kind of waiting on an annual basis to see if something happened or didn't.
Any other comments or questions?
Really quickly, as a parent, before I joined the board, you know, I think in the last year, there's been a lot of progress in terms of hiring Ms. Latour, forming the racial equity committee. And, you know, Jim and Mania Way really bringing this to the forefront. I mean, it has been, but even more, I feel like I feel your sense of urgency and I know it's not an easy problem to solve. And so, you know, just being a parent, not on the board, I felt like the district was making it a priority. And so I appreciate you bringing this information to us. So thank you for that.
Yeah, just to kind of build on what Diane's saying is that every district around us has the same kind of racial equity challenges and issues and achievement gaps. But you'll find very few districts that actually talk about it openly, explicitly, and certainly at the board table. So I think that's, if nothing else, the fact that we as a board and an administration are making commitment to talk about it openly and directly and trying to hold yourselves accountable for doing something different to change that dynamic is a huge leap forward. The progress can always be faster, right? It can always be more impactful. But I think the first step is that, you know, we're talking about it and we're acknowledging it and trying to do something about it.
Jim, I'm wondering if you can give us an update on two things. I know there were two efforts underway at one point. One was regarding belongingness to start a campaign with visual videos and things like that that would be targeted to the students to foster a sense of belonging. If you can just share where we are with that program as well as the effort to engage the community on a more regular basis. I know that we were looking at potentially libraries and community centers in the area at one point to offer additional support for students who may fall within the gap. Is that still ongoing and are there any updates as to where that might stand as well?
Thanks, Paul. Yes, we may have to get back to you on the status of the videos. We've had our community conversations regarding related topics to DEI and SEL. We haven't been, we haven't re-engaged the idea of in-person opportunities at places like the library just because of the pandemic, but I, and we won't be able to get to that this school year. But I would envision us revisiting that in a coming school year, just the same way we were talking about that school programs at the schools. There are ways to provide extra supports if students can get there, if students are willing to get there and if we have the staff to help us.
I think that's great. I'm looking at this as a holistic approach that involves the community and all stakeholders to play a part as well as the administration and the district. And so I think the more we can get those other organizations involved, obviously coming out of the pandemic and when it's safe to do so, I think would be great. And the other thing I would also suggest, if we haven't already, potentially look into summer programs and other programs throughout the year when school's not in session, where some of these other organizations might be helpful. But again, a holistic approach that involves the stakeholders within the community as well as a year-round approach to just allow us as much time as possible to try to work to reduce the gap. I think we would all benefit.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for that report. We'll move now to our first public comment period and I don't see anyone registered in person. I don't see anyone registered in person.
We have one on Zoom. It's Carmina Taylor.
Okay, Carmina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
So, good evening, everyone. I want to just say for Zephy, Amy, Paul and Joe, I'm thoroughly impressed that you finally started asking questions that made, that really gave down to some answers. So I was listening and I think, you know, Zephy, last time you did specifically ask for GPAs and the superintendent said, yes, that could happen. I still think it could happen because in January 2021, you identified Dr. Cressfield, the disengaged and COVID slide students. You hired temporary teachers on assignment to address those gap issues with those kids. So why not see where their grades are now in 2022? So that's actually my question. What are the grade levels for the disengaged and COVID slide students from 2021 and where are they in 2022? In terms of restorative justice, I just want everyone to know that I attended the Harvard University Achievement Gap Institute. And when you talk about restorative justice, the outcomes are the number of detentions and suspensions that have been reduced. So then my second question is, did you guys survey the parents, the black parents, black parents of boys that have a propensity to have greater detentions and suspensions, whether the code of conduct policy is working? Those are the, those are the repeat offenders. Those are the ones that get in trouble. That's who you need to gauge your outcomes with. The keystones, two of the white parents that spoke last month or the last board meeting clearly provided data that showed the slides in the keystones, which warranted the question of why we should have more accountability other than once a year. So why not be honest about the Keystone exams? I like the idea of the number of honor roll and AP courses. I did a write to know request and found that when the superintendent did his presentation in 2016, there were seven black children from K to 12 identified in the gifted program. And now the most recent data shows 10, so that's a yield of three in five years. That right there is a data point that needs to be addressed. I have eight school districts in Montgomery County that I oversee. We are doing the Penn survey belonging. They're anecdotal. They do not produce data points. We need more answers. Paul, thank you for acknowledging that the community needs to be part of the process. I'm down 14 seconds. I'll be back at the second public comments, but please take note of the questions I asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmina. Katie, is there anyone else registered online?
No more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to our board president report. And first, my informational item, I'd like to announce that our new PSBA liaison is going to be Diane. Congratulations and thank you for your service, Zephy. And I'm excited to hear your upcoming reports. We had our first thing today, so we'll have our first report this evening. And then I have two action items, which is the approval of a resolution number W 522 for the appointment of Wade T. Coleman as business administrator per document 61 and the approval of Timothy P. Matthews as board treasurer for the 2022-2023 school year. And those will both be voted upon at our next board meeting. Any questions? All right, we'll move to our superintendent report.
Okay, thank you. The informational item is just an update on our list of district goals and ongoing priorities for the year. This is update number two. The first update was in February and the next one will be in June. I won't read the goals themselves. We should be familiar with them by now, but the district goal one has to do with investigating later school start times. And I think we are making a very good headway on that front. This month and next month, the community or the advisory committee is going to hear some presentations over the summer. We'll create some specifics and then come fall, this room will have some presentations on what options exist specifically for West Hickon, given our geography and given our transportation. And then we'll be able to gather feedback from board, community, students, family, staff. And remember, our ultimate target is to, is to vote on something in January so that we have time to implement it in September of 2023. So lots of work to do and we already have, thank you to mine and Zephy for being on that committee and you're going to hear a lot of talking in the next couple of months. Our next goal is to create an annual discussion and accountability cycle for the board's racial equity oversight committee. And we have certainly done that. It's to dovetail with the district's equity planning committee. And in our monthly meetings of what's actually known as REAC, we do speak, we did examine a list of things that can be first addressed, such as, as Joe pointed out, the gifted program. And then, and then come back to it with either impressions from the last meeting or thoughts since the last meeting in front of the people on the committee. And then, so as we just don't talk about something and then dump it, it's more of a scaffolding effect. Goal three, as you may remember, is to support the implementation of strategies and activities that are designed to enhance the sense of belonging for all students. I think we've discussed those a good bit already, which will combine with enhanced target instructional supports. And same for those, this was created, crafted, obviously coming off of what we knew was going to be a pandemic. The bends, the COVID bends is it's being referred to. And we have lots of things in place that I think we already just discussed. Four A is to develop and prove a 2022-23 budget that meets all of our needs and challenges and is both fluid and flexible. That progress is underway. Finance committee had a budget workshop earlier and has one more in May before the board will consider the final budget later in May. Four B is to develop and implement a financially sound capital improvement plan for both the high school athletic fields and the former pool area of middle school. And both of those projects are underway. We have funding identified for both. And the design team for both is busy at work getting those documents in order. Five A is to systematically review the second third of the district's policy manual. Yes, that's happening. It's another note chunk tonight to review. And we will finish year two of the three-year goal this year. So we got one more year to go. We can do it. And five B is to devise and implement a plan for a total redesign of the district's website. And that work is ongoing. And I know that Zephy and her communications committee will, could perhaps give an update on that, but lots of work is being done, getting some good feedback. And I think progress is being made there. So those are our goals.
Any comments or questions for Jim? Well, thank you so much for that report.
You're welcome. And my one action item just for review tonight is the revised calendar for this existing school year. We will have one fewer weather days needed than scheduled, so school will be out one day earlier in June. So I hear lots of objections to that. Would people like to go later? I don't know. Take, no? No? Okay. Tati, I'm sure you prefer June or no? You're over quiet over there.
No, I'm definitely very excited to get one day earlier. That one day really counts.
Okay, fine. It's decided. Then, fine.
Well, thank you so much for your report tonight, Jim. Any questions or comments at all? No? All right. We'll move on to Dr. Dewan's report.
Hi, good evening. There are no informational items and no action items this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Dewan. And we'll move next to our board solicitor report, Jeff.
I have no report. I talked to you enough in executive session.
I talked to you enough in executive session.
Well, thank you, Jeff. All right, we'll move next to our board secretary report, Wade.
Thank you. There's no informational item, and, uh, the next meeting we will present for approval, uh, various minutes, including the March 14th budget and facility meetings, March 24th, uh, excuse me, 21st racial equity oversight committee, the March 28th work session public meeting minutes, the April 4th regular public meeting minutes, and the April 18th policy committee meetings.
Thank you, Wade. Any questions or comments on those? No? Wade, can you go ahead with the board treasurer report?
Yes, thank you. No informational item, and at the next meeting we'll be presenting for acceptance, submitting the treasurer's report for March 31st, 2022, per document 11-1.
Thank you, Wade. Any comments or questions?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on next to our director of human resources report, Danielle.
Hi, good evening. Tonight, there are no informational items. For your review are nine action items under 12B. The first two action items include retirements, resignations, appointments, changes of status, leaves of absences, extracurricular changes, and volunteer additions. Action items three and four are a revised staff job description and a new extracurricular job description. Item five is for the approval of our agreement with STS, um, who provides our substitute teachers. Item seven is a conference request, and items eight and nine are the approvals of the Whisahican Administration, um, Act 93 Agreement, uh, Act 93, and confidential salaries that were, will be effective on July 1st, uh, per the employment agreement stated in July of 2021, and also were board approved in May of 2021. So that's, uh, that's all I have, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Danielle. Any comments or questions? All right, well, thank you again. We'll now move on to our committee reports. With our communications committee, Zeffy?
Hi, I have a couple of updates informational. Uh, one, uh, as Dr. Chris Fields, uh, mentioned, there is some work being done on our website. Kristen Rollins and Jennifer Morehouse are the women who are behind the scenes doing all the hard work. So kudos to them. Um, they are looking at every single page and getting feedback from the different departments and through the different stakeholders to make sure information's relevance, updated, and, you know, uh, has everything that needs to be provided. They are working with reorganizing some of the content, um, with the middle school and the high school, human resources, et cetera. They're changing out, um, some of the, uh, information on the athletic page, which, once you get into middle school and high school, is a very important page because every day is different. They are still talking to different vendors to kind of, uh, see where we're going to move the platform. I think that decision's not going to be made for a little while, so they're still assessing. And then they will continue to have discussions through all of May and all of June so that they could go through all of the content and make sure that they've had a once-over with everybody. So I asked per timelines, it looks like everything is trending really well. They're on track and can't wait to see this new website. So nothing glorious to report, other than all the work and the hard work is being done right now. The second item, um, that I will inform on, um, as, again, Dr. Chris Field mentioned, Ronnie and I are on this subcommittee for the school start end times. Um, there's an advisory committee, again, that's across stakeholders. So we are the two board members, but we also have teachers, students, as well as the community be part of this. So there is a meeting tomorrow, and at tomorrow's meeting, we will, uh, get presentations about, um, how some other districts have fared with this change. So that will be really nice to see. And then, um, we're also going to hear from the athletic director to hear about how, um, schools deal with after-school sports because that creates another element that we need to work through. And then, um, the third bullet says a day in the life of our students. So I'm assuming they're just going to walk us through what, you know, this new schedule would potentially look like. So I'm excited to hear how those go. And then there'll be another one, um, in May as well. So, um, we're, we're going to continue to have these advisory council meetings so that we could get all the questions that I think all of us and our, our community has about what this might do to everything because it impacts more than just your start, right? That's all I have for today. Does anybody have questions?
Zeffy, I do. Um, the meeting tomorrow night, is that open to the public?
So this is just for those who are in the community. Um, my understanding, and Jim, keep me honest here, is at, once we've gone through all of this, some version of what we see gets done here at the school board, but that won't happen till, like, next school year.
That's correct. This is, we're in the, um, fact-finding stage, I would call it, and an opinion gathering stage. It's not, uh, for feedback on specific ideas. Once, once we finish with this committee work over the summer, we're going to, we're going to put together uh, documents that would be required for, for everyone, board, community, staff, students, um, to take a look at, okay, well, here are three options. This, this is how WIS could do it, where, where, say, we flip the start times. This is how WIS could do it if we just slide all the start times later. And this is some third thing that WIS just came up with because we have already, uh, triple-tier busing or double-tier, and, and it's, it's, can be something else. But it, it's going to require some creativity over the summer. And then the, all, everything else from there will be a public, uh, maybe with Zoom and in-person or maybe some person, we haven't figured that out yet, but open to everyone.
That'd be great. Thank you. And I, I guess I could provide an update of, like, at our next meeting. Yeah.
Thanks, Zeffy. Any other comments or questions?
I think I have a quick, quick comment, actually. So it is possible that we are going to be in permanent daylight savings starting in spring of 2023, and I just want that to be kept in mind as the Philadelphia sunrise would be at about 8:15 in December and January. So just for my elementary kids and the time. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Any other comments or questions? All right, uh, we'll move on next to our curriculum and technology committee report, Ronnie.
I have nothing to report on, no way. Dr. Dewan may have some things to say.
Yes, thank you. Um, we have, um, one informational item this evening and several action items. Item 14A1 is our informational item, and this is a focus on our district's comprehensive plan for 2022 through 2025. Every three years, districts prepare and submit a comprehensive plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. The comprehensive plan demonstrates the district's commitment to continuous improvement of leadership, teaching, and learning in an effort to ensure all students excel to their fullest potential. The comprehensive plan identifies priorities and action plans with steps to address the established priorities. Our comprehensive planning process was coordinated by me as the assistant superintendent and steered by three essential groups. Leadership Council, which is our administrative team, the district's Equity Planning Committee, and the Board's Racial Equity Oversight Committee. In total, these three groups represent members from all stakeholder groups, including, uh, students, parents and guardians, staff, administration, board members, and community members. And over the course of this school year, each group met monthly at their respective meetings to explore data, reflect on current practices, and identify action steps for improving our efforts in the district for moving forward. Many of those action steps are now reflected in our district's comprehensive plan for 2022 through 2025. The plan is now posted on our district's webpage for a 30-day public review period, and we will seek board approval of the plan at the public board meeting on June 6th, following the 30-day public review period. Excuse me. And this evening, we have 14 action items in section 14B of the board agenda, and we'll be seeking approval for these items on May 2nd. I guess I should pause if there are any questions about the informational item before moving on to the action items.
Okay, one question. So, um, help me understand for the period that it's open for public review and the public pose questions and kind of pose inquiries? And if so, is, is it through here, through the board meeting? Or is it through some other fashion that folks should meet that request?
That's a great question. Thank you for that. Um, they could certainly, of course, ask questions or present, um, feedback at, at either board meet, board meeting. They could also, uh, direct those queries or, um, comments to me via email, um, at mdewan@wsdweb.org. Thank you for that. All right, um, with our 14 action items in section 14B of the board agenda, uh, walked through each of these. Uh, item number one is related to the instructional days for our seniors. Uh, as it stands now, at the conclusion of the 21-22 school year, our, um, seniors will have 179 instructional days. They began the school year with 180 days, um, of instruction on our calendar. However, one day was lost due to inclement weather conditions. Uh, when this happens, districts may submit a request to PDE for an exception to the required 180 days. But of course, we must first seek board approval. Uh, the day that we will be recommending for this Act 80 exception is August 25th, 2021, which was, uh, the day that included in-service activities centered on curriculum planning and professional development. So on May 2nd, we will be seeking approval from the board for us to submit this request for an exception to PDE. Uh, the next item is number two. Uh, the Gateway to College Partnership is an opportunity for, uh, our identified students to take classes at the Montgomery County Community College to earn credits for their Whisahican High School diploma while also earning college credits. Uh, this partnership began in 2013-14 school year, when the district entered into the partnership with the MCC and the Gateway to College National Foundation to provide an alternative pathway for students who are at risk of not being successful in the high school environment and/or dropping out. Our district pays the program fees associated with students selected to participate in the Gateway to College program. And for the 22-23 school year, we anticipate, uh, that there will be no more than 12 semester openings allotted based on student need with the cost not to exceed $43,000. For item number three, we will be seeking approval, uh, to renew our agreement with the Montgomery County Community College for the 22-23 school year for our high school students to enroll and participate in college credit. So this is a dual-credit program, which is different than the program I just mentioned. Um, so for this dual-credit program, we have an annual agreement, and, uh, will be submitting requests, but, excuse me, will be seeking approval, uh, for that agreement on May 2nd. For item number four, each year, the MC IU administers and coordinates billing efforts for the school-based access program. The access program allows districts to receive federal Medicaid reimbursement for certain therapies delivered to some of our students who are receiving special education services. This is an annual agreement with the MC IU, and there are no changes from the previous agreement. For item number five, the MC IU shared service profile for the 22-23 school year is an estimated cost of what the MC IU believes the district's services will encompass. In document 14-5, you'll see the plan's adjustments are noted in both red and blue text to indicate the district's recommendations. This shared services plan demonstrates anticipated services to support our students. For item number six, document 14-6 includes a memo requesting approval of curriculum instruction budget expenditures planned for the 22-23 school year. This includes instructional resources, annual assessment and software renewals, and annual district memberships. For item number seven, as we know, stage two of the district's curriculum review cycle for social studies has come to completion. The planned courses of study listed have been revised and are now being recommended for approval as noted on document 14-7. This was an informational item at the March 28th public board workshop meeting and the 30-day public review period, and, uh, excuse me, began on March 29th. And on May 2nd, we'll seek approval for the adoption of these planned courses of study for social studies. For item number eight, these are instructional resources that are being recommended for final approval to support the instructional programs in K-12 social studies, K-12 English development, English language development, and grades 9-12 mathematics. As such, we'll be recommending these resources to be purchased to support the delivery of the respective curricula. The 30-day public review period opened on March 9th, and we'll seek final approval on May 2nd. For item number nine, the MC IU Virtual High School Consortium Partnership offers courses reserved for students who are in our biotech allied health program. These courses are also reserved for students in our gifted program that exceed the courses we offer in the building. For example, if a student accelerates through all of our math courses that are offered, they could take a math course during their senior year through the VHS platform. This is an annual agreement with no significant changes from the previous school year. For item number 10, the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit's Montgomery Virtual Program, the MVP, is a provider for our Whisahican Virtual Academy, the, the WVA. Uh, students in grades K-12 will continue to be able to choose to enroll in the Whisahican Virtual Academy next school year. This is an annual agreement with no significant changes from the previous school year. For item number 11, there are two requests for extended field trips. Uh, the high school's jazz band and the middle school invention convention. The high school jazz band comprised of 35 students will travel to Harrisburg, Pennsylvania on Friday, June 3rd to perform at the state capitol. The band was personally invited to perform by Representative Mary Jo Scanlon. This is the first time that the band will perform in the state capitol since 2006. How exciting and congratulations. And at the middle school, four middle school students won the Pennsylvania Invention Convention and have qualified for the National Invention Convention in Duopan, Michigan. These students will travel with their parents or guardians to the national convention on Monday, May 30th, and return on Friday, June 3rd. Congratulations to those middle schoolers. For item number 12, we have an annual renewal for the appointment of our school physician and school dentist for the 20, excuse me, for the 22-23 school year. There are no significant changes from the current service agreements, and more information, of course, is included in document 14-12. For item number 13, we'll be seeking ratification of outplay services and tuition costs for three students as indicated in document 14-13. And finally, for action item number 14, we will seek approval of the outplay services and tuition costs for one student as indicated in document 14-14. And that concludes my report this evening. Are there any questions?
Of course I have. This is quite the list. So I'm just curious for especially items two, three, and nine, how do students even know that these programs are available to them? Like, is there an outreach? Is it, like, known? Uh, because I think you're phenomenal that we offer this. I just want to know, you know, is it well-known?
Yes, thank you. I know that, um, you know, this, this idea of how are we communicating to students and families and ensuring that they're aware of the various wonderful programs that the district has to offer is something that we've reflected on, um, through our various committees, through, um, think, and with the administrators, in particular, at the middle school and high school, um, to ensure that those conversations are happening as students are progressing before they get to the high school, that they're aware of those programs. Um, and I know that there is, um, and, and a big event at the high school where they look at all of the programs available for students and make sure that families are well-versed and informed. And we've been working on how are we helping at the middle school level, families to become aware? And some of that includes conversation, some of it includes communication, written communication. But some of it also includes updates that we've made to our website, uh, for families to know all of the offerings that are available. This is an area that we're continuing to reflect on and certainly are open to feedback.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Dewan, I have a question. Can you, can you refresh my questions to the purpose of the school dentist and doctor? Like, what role they serve for our district specifically?
Yes. Uh, yes, we do have, um, services that the district is required to, to provide. Uh, we had some conversation recently, it seems, about the same topic. What those, um, the costs that we provide that are required for those services. Um, PDE requires that we have certain health screenings, certain dental screenings that occur in certain grade levels. Um, and so they, they, the relationship that we have with them helps support those PDE-required screenings that we have to provide for all students. And again, at certain grade levels, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll, I'll be sure to send a vote to the board so that you have that information.
And the only reason I ask is I see the school physician, he's pretty close by in Jenkentown, but the school dentist is in Voorhees over in New Jersey. Is this somebody we would refer students to, to go for any sort of, like, dental assessment that we would need to report?
That's a great question. Thank you, and it helps me to provide greater clarity. So they would come on-site into our school to do those screenings.
Oh, great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then. Thank you so much, Dr. Dewan.
Thank you.
Uh, next to our finance committee report, David.
I'm
I'm sorry, facilities, Joe.
All right, for the facilities committee, we have one informational item. It's essentially a recap of the facilities committee meeting that we had on April nineteenth. We spent the majority of the time talking about Blue Bell Elementary expansion and alteration options. This is in response to our projected increasing enrollment and capacity issues at Blue Bell. I see this, I see the slides up here. Are we planning on walking through these slides, Jim?
I think there was a request just to do a quick summary of the main three options.
Okay, right, yeah. So there were three main options approaches that the architects reviewed with the committee last week. And in essence, we sort of settled on option three as the preferred option for expanding capacity at Blue Bell. I don't know, Wade, if you want to just jump to the, the actual slide and we could just talk through at a high level what option three entails.
High level, got it. So option one, providing for a full build of the multipurpose and which would be for the gymnasium cafeteria and a large groups space plus classrooms. One of the advantages is based on the fact that it's on the one tip of the building, it wouldn't have an incredible amount of construction impact. Some, but not an awful lot. All of the options improve the traffic and circulation. Some of them, you know, slightly different than the other ones. And the one other con that we, the one con that we had is noted from the educator's standpoint, the long distance from K to the end of the new construction and that there's no back corridor, as is we will see in item three.
Hey Wade, just in the interest of time, maybe we could just jump straight to option, option or concept number three.
Yep, understood. Option two was not particularly loved by the committee, so we are going to skip that. Option three is, could you flip two more? That's it. Thank you. Option three is construction of basically the same facility in the back with the classrooms going along the back as a corridor. So it's really just a flip conversation to the back of the building. The educators generally like the fact that it gave more of an educational feel and connectiveness for the building. One of the cons is that it is the highest cost. It will be a difficult construction just because we have so many points of continuous construction to current education, you know, going on during the day. So that'll be a bit of a challenge. And it also creates more of an impact to the, to the bus garage. We have to essentially take some of the woods in that dark gray in the upper right-hand corner and convert it into bus garage facility needs because we're stealing some of the bus garage for the parking and the playground in the back. We, we also had the design team based on board input. There was a request to consider whether or not we'd be able to do a bus loop in the back. And can you call that up? So based on the board input, the design team, Jerry and architect and some engineering support as well. They designed a loop that pretty much completely changes the structure of how people are getting in and out. So in the yellow in the back up to the top of this picture is a bus loop. So you would come in to the bus garage the same way you would come if you were parking. And then we've created an additional loop with an additional exit off to the top. The advantage to that was based on some of the board voiced concerns about leaving the playground area, which is on the bottom center-left. And that would allow for the playground and the hard surface to remain. One of the disadvantages would be, again, we are not going to increase the exit capacities for the leaving cars. So they would go back onto Symphony Lane. So that is a bit of a disadvantage. We're still fleshing through the various details to this, but the design team thought it would be appropriate to just quick put it up the, for the board if there's any reaction to it based on the board feedback.
Did Mrs. Farlow have any reaction to this kind of, or did she see it yet?
She's seen it. Great question. Thank you. It all came together today at about noon. So I've sent it to Mrs. Farlow, but I haven't heard anything back yet.
Okay, thanks.
The one thing Wade, with that recent variation, it does actually separate the, the bus and passenger car traffic in the front of the building that's currently there now. So if nothing else, that, that's an improvement.
Thank you, yes.
So again, there were three main concepts that we looked at. We settled on option three. The slides, this slide deck will be available on the website. So if folks want to take a look at some of the other site plan concepts, but you know, three is again where we had some consensus around that. The overall cost of that was in the neighborhood of, I think it was about twenty-one million dollars or maybe twenty-one to twenty-three million dollars, depending on whether or not we wanted to have the alternate option of adding some additional classrooms as part of concept number three. So I mean, it will certainly improve the capacity and I think alleviate the short and long-term capacity ease of Blue Bell, but it does come with a pretty sizable cost that we have to take into consideration. In addition to taking a look at Blue Bell and some of the construction options there to alleviate overcrowding, we also took a look at concepts for renovating the former pool space at the middle school. And the basic approach would be to convert that into additional classroom space, a total of six classrooms. Were part of the design and we took a look at some schematics associated with that as well. Now, I think the, the rough sort of initial ballpark estimate for that project, if I recall, Wade, was it, was it about five million?
Yeah, five, five point four million. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So if some, some folks might recall is that we looked at renovating the former pool space a few years back. At that point, thinking about turning it into a performing arts space. And we had earmarked the budget of a neighborhood of six million dollars. So fast forward to where we are now, it's a different approach with a different set of goals, more instructional space. But the overall price tag being a little bit less than what we were sort of contemplating a few years back. So that's a, that's a good development there. In addition, we took a look at some results from a traffic study in the high school area, well, really the, the road between the high school and the middle school. McMahon did some analysis and put together some recommendations on improving traffic flow. But I think based on the discussion, we decided to table those recommendations for now until we have a clear understanding of what's going to happen with the later school start times for the fall twenty-twenty-three. And based on that, then we may revisit the whole recommendations around traffic flow. But there's a thought that with later school start times, we might actually just naturally alleviate some of the traffic congestion congestion that currently happens on that road. And then aside from those reports and updates, we then reviewed some of the action items which are going to be for vote for next week. And Wade, can you run through those action items that we have on the facilities list?
Thank you. So item one is discarding and selling obsolete equipment. We do this a couple of times a year. We have the modular connection, which is the electric data installation at one hundred twenty-three thousand. We have Co-Stars supply bids, which we have every year totaling one hundred and sixty-four thousand to various vendors. And Mr. Moore walked through why this has been positive for the district. And the final one essentially ties us with the Montgomery County, you know, bid to various providers. And this provides the ability for Mr. Moore to lock in the actual pricing when it's beneficial to the district.
Thanks, Wade. Any questions about the, either the action items or the informational update on last week's committee meeting? Nope, okay. That's my report then. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, now David, the finance committee.
Thank you, Amy. Let's see, our informational item from the finance committee is a recap of the April nineteenth meeting of the budget, well, finance committee budget workshop where we received an overview of fairly good detail from Dr. Heim Makloski considering special education in the many facets that go into that department and what they deliver. That particular component is expected to increase around four percent, I believe, in this budget. And we also got reviews of the regular education component, support services, business services, and student transportation. We revisited a review of new programs and item requests that has been prioritized to some extent to help us better decide what if any of those can be funded or left behind. They're all certainly going to be valuable additions if we can find the way to fund them. But that's part of the discussion that will happen at the next meeting, which is to occur May ninth at six-thirty. Wade, would you like to add anything to?
Okay, thank you.
Would you mind going through the action items?
Thank you. So the first item is the standard approval of the financial report per document sixteen-one. The second item is, as we discussed in the meeting, as part of the state process, we need to propose a final budget, which will then be available for public inspection. We will advertise it, make it available in various locations and put it on the website, et cetera. And that document is included in the packet as document sixteen point two. It includes a three point three seven percent tax increase, which is, as we've discussed, that again can change between now and when we adopt it next month. Item three is a follow-up from the last meeting, which is the approval of the waiving of the stadium usage fees for the Rotary Club. Item four is receiving a proposal and the approval of the Fox Rothschild annual legal services retainer and other, and that is included in document sixteen-three. Item five is the approval of the proposals from Maely Falconero. Item, document sixteen-four. And the last item is item six, which is the list of payments issued for the month ending March thirty-first, twenty-two, per document sixteen-five.
Any questions or comments? No? All right. Well, thank you so much, David and Wade, for that report. We'll move now to our policy committee report. Marshall?
Thank you, Amy. We have two informational items this evening. The first is a recap of the April eighteenth Policy Committee meeting. The second one ties into the recap. It is the policy manual review summary per, per document seventeen-one A. At this last meeting, we discussed the end of the employee-related policies, rounding out the, the three hundred series that we will be looking at for the remainder of the year. There were four items which were up for review. Two had to do with sabbatical leave, one for administrative employees and the other for certified employees. There was one provision regarding drug and substance abuse relative to all employees. And then the fourth was the look-back measurement for the health plan eligibility under the Affordable Care Act relative to our bus and van drivers only. Because of that, there were six different provisions up for deletion as they essentially are now outdated and wrapped up into newer provisions. So we have now finished up the three hundred series essentially for the year. We'll be moving on to the six to nine hundred series in the fall. And next week, we will be looking for, under our action items sign, you will see, we'll be looking for approval of the first reading from our work session of these policies that we went over. I did have a quick question though for, for Katie. I did not see on B one through eight, sections three thirty-eight or three fifty-seven that I'm is that not included in, in the vote for next week?
Three thirty-four sabbatical leave for administrators where there were no changes. So there's nothing to review to vote upon. And then three thirty-seven, the same thing, or just?
Three fifty-seven.
Three fifty-seven, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so next week again, we'll be looking for approval of the first reading of action items B one through eight.
Wait, thank you, Marshall. Are there any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then to our racial equity oversight committee report, Paul.
Thank you, Amy. We have one informational item, which is a recap of our April eighteenth meeting. We had two presentations by the, by the administration. Both were fantastic. One was the update regarding the racial disproportionality in special education programs. And the second was the results of the belonging survey for students and staff. We've already heard from Dr. Chris Field earlier in his report about the belonging survey, at least an overview on belonging. I'll ask Dr. Dewan if she can give us a brief overview of the disproportionality in special education programs.
Yes, thank you. So at the meeting on April eighteenth, the committee focused on, as Mr. Badger said, special education services is one of the, the agenda topics. The district presented information on the disproportionality in special education for students in PDEs who are receiving services through chapter fourteen, which is special education, and chapter sixteen, which is gifted education. And the steps currently taken to address those disparities in identification, in discipline, and in student placement. And we also highlighted the next steps and shared research on best practices to address these trends. This topic is one that will loop back around for this committee to continually review and reflect on progress that we're making in terms of ensuring that we are mitigating the disparities that we see.
Thank you, Dr. Dewan. As I said, there were two fantastic presentations. One thing of note, we, we did also recognize that there is some overlap between the special education program disproportionality as well as the achievement gap. That's something that we will probably take a look at moving forward as well. There were no action items for this week. And so if there are any questions or, or comments?
Paul, I just want to make a comment on the, the term disproportionality, which is a kind of a mouthful. When we use that term, essentially what we're talking about is if you look at the, the demographics of the district as a whole, and there are representations of different students, white, black, Asian, et cetera. If our systems were equitable and sort of, you know, no other factors at play, what you'd expect to see when you look at the specialized population, when you look at the gifted population, when you look at who gets suspensions and more serious, serious or disciplinary actions that you'd see similar proportions. And based on the presentation that we looked at in our own actual data, we saw wide disparities and over-representations of in particular, black and Latino students in sort of the negative areas and you know, underrepresentation on some of the positive measures. And so that's the disproportionality that we're referring to where it, it's not representative of the district population at a whole, as a whole. And we do have some serious disproportionality issues to address and try to tackle. And again, similar to a lot of the achievement gap stuff, this is data that's sort of been built up over time. And for us to try to unpack it and improve it, it's going to also take time. But the first step is number one, acknowledging it, trying to come up with some strategies for how we can address root causes. Put those action plans around, around, in place to address it, implement it, and then hopefully over time see changes on the outcomes. But yeah, it's, it's important data for us to be aware of and even more important for us to do something about. What I noticed was that the agenda and also the report that we look at, looked at, actually both reports were not available on the district website. So I would ask maybe Dr. Dewan or Katie to make sure that those are available for the public to see if they weren't able to attend the meeting. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for that report, Paul. All right. So now we will move on to our report of board representatives, extracurricular, Marshall?
There's nothing to report at this meeting.
Okay. I also have nothing to report on the MCIAU Board of Directors or Legislative Committee. We haven't had a meeting since my last report. North Monco Technical Career Center, Ronnie or David?
I think it's my turn. The committee, the joint operating committee met last week and heard presentations about the, I guess it's a reflective assessment tool that the, the different departments use and collecting data that they report to the state, which is kind of illuminating about how they evaluate their progress and their effectiveness. We heard from Mrs. Gina Partovich, who's the administrative director, that they just wrapped up their enrollment. that they just wrapped up their enrollment application process for this year. They're oversubscribed by a significant number of spaces. I think they had 450 applications for about 300 seats in next year's programs. So that's a pretty good situation to be in, but apparently that has been trending for the last few years. And so I'm not sure that there's any remedy to that, but if you want to get into those programs, I guess a little preparation would be good until we can find ways to expand those. And then finally, there was a car show a couple of weeks ago that was hosted by their educational foundation that they have at the tech center. They had some concern that it wasn't going to go over because the weather was pretty lousy in the morning, but it cleared off. They filled up the parking lot and raised, I think around $16,000 for the foundation. The success overall. And other than that, it was pretty much routine business that we considered. Thanks.
Great question. So what happens to those 150 overage? Does that mean like 150 kids of the 450, because there's only 300 seats are not going to get a seat? So will they move to a lottery first time, you know, first come, first served? Or do you make the cut? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, it's a imagine the most complicated scheduling challenge with getting five districts with five different schedules. Some students are part time, some are full time. Some programs are oversubscribed, some have capacity. And if a student wants, is interested in one of the oversubscribed programs, there's an allotment, they try to do it as fairly as they can. It's not like a first come, first serve. Older students get a little little preference. They try to allocate it by district as best they can. They try to give students who started part time and are going to go to full time in preference. You know, it's there's like, there's must be eight different variables they roll into this equation to figure out how to allocate their slots. And then they start talking to the students about, well, what about this program instead? Which is, which is a conversation I don't quite understand because the student is interested in, say, welding. And and he or she goes to the tech school for welding or woodworking or whatever. Yeah, don't go to cosmetology from there. But in any event, they they're very cognizant of the need to to be fair about it, to 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 give students as as equal a chance as possible at all the programs. And this problem that David described is actually a good problem to have in the sense that there's lots of interest, which I love, from the text of students in the tech school and all five of the districts. So yes, expanding programs is not something that can happen overnight. And they track interest in their programs religiously. So if they can see that the trend is down at a particular program for three years in a row, goes on probation and then phase it out, and they can maybe double this other one over here. But it's it's kind of a slow process.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much for the report. All right. And our new PSBA liaison, Diane?
Thanks. I know it's late, but we had a really exciting day. Amy and I went to Harrisburg and there is a PSBA, which is the Pennsylvania School Board Association Advocacy Day. And so we met with several of our representatives to talk about a couple of things. A few things that we're advocating for is charter school reform. I know Ron had talked a lot about this when he was on the board, but basically the charter school, when someone enrolls in a cyber charter school, they take the money that we spend on them with them. And they don't have a brick and mortar. There's much, you know, there's fewer operating expenses, but there's no limitations and no reporting on what they spend their tuition dollars on. And then there's one estimate that cyber charter schools have spent $30 million of Pennsylvania taxpayer dollars on advertising alone. And so this, you know, a little bit less so for Wessehickin, but this is a huge problem statewide. And I know it does affect our budget as well. Another problem that districts are encountering is just growth in fixed costs. In the last 10 years, pension costs have increased 533%. And then, like I mentioned, the charter school tuition costs have increased 128%. And this is about 70%. Those two numbers account for about 70% of the increase in expenditures per student over the last 10 years. And these are two fixed costs that like we can't do anything about. And so basically our funding is falling short, and so then that falls on the taxpayer. The other issue is special education costs outpacing revenue. So in 2010, about 38% roughly of district costs were were covered by state and federal funding. But in 2020, that dropped to 25%. Initially with special education mandates, Congress said that it would fund 40% of the costs and the mandates that they put on districts, but that has not happened. To give you an example, with the Hickin, we spend about almost $21 million a year on special education. And we get state funds of about $2.4 million. So when that doesn't stay, when those funds don't stay on pace and our costs rise, unfortunately, we have no choice but to raise that money by raising property taxes. So it was really eye opening about the the funding that's needed in education. So we went to the representatives and asked for a basic funding education for special education funding, charter school reform, mental, increased spending for mental health, and then increased funding for career and technical education, which is a timely conversation, I suppose. Yeah. So Amy, do you have anything to add? It was, it was, I had a really good day. I learned a lot. I got to talk to other school board members from other districts and as well as some business managers and superintendents. And it was really interesting.
I think you covered it really well. I really enjoyed it as well. And I was really surprised at the number of unfunded mandates. What was it, 144?
144 unfunded mandates that the federal government or the state says you have to do this, but then gives you no money to do it. And so that's a position that we're in, like, do I want my taxes raised? No, I don't. But like, we're in a position where how are we going to fund our programs if we don't do that? So, yeah.
Well, thank you so much for that report. All right. So are there any questions or comments to her report?
Yeah, I just have one question. What what were some of the examples of the unfunded mandates?
Or is that I have the whole list of 144 that I can show you. And actually, I don't know, Jim, is there a way we could get these slides on the website? I don't know if they
Yes, we do.
Because they're fascinating and it's just great. It's just so so interesting. So like this whole page or is that, you know?
We'll white out all your handwritten notes on them.
No, 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 I have a blank copy for you.
Okay, good. Perfect.
Yeah, blank copy.
And Diane, if you could also include the Wessehickin fact sheet, if we could add that to the website.
Yes, very interesting. Good idea. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Again, thank you. All right, we're now at our second public comment period. I have no sheets for in person comments. Is there anyone online? None? Okay. Okay. Carmina, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
So I want to talk about facts. Here's a fact. On September 12, 2016, the superintendent offered me an opportunity to be on his advisory council. I don't know if it was a year or two later, but then I was dismissed off of his advisory council because he wanted to add new people. I remember that he was asked multiple times to share with the community about the achievement gap plan that he had. Fact is, that has not happened. The facts are that there has not been outreaches to the community to engage and to help them understand how they can be a stakeholder, how they can be a partner, how they can be an asset to the school community. That's a fact. The other fact is that, you know, I asked the right to know question about the ESER funds. And the ESER funds, ESER 2, as I've said before, are related to low income Title I families. And then ESER 3 is regarding intervention methods. I received an answer that they don't collect the data in reference to the questions that I asked regarding ESER. I'm asking the school board, who the superintendent works for, and you guys work for the community, to hold more accountability of actually getting a town hall, a physical meeting with people from the community. Because what I do know is that the outreach efforts that we have made as an alum, as alums revising, reestablishing the alumni association, we have had continual roadblocks. And I just think, and I just got off the phone, I dipped off this call to get on a call with a class graduate from 2020 that said, there is a disconnect between the students and the community. I have some recent alums that are going to be part of our Hall of Fame ceremony this weekend, which, by the way, none of you acknowledged my email or said you were coming or you didn't. Another disconnect with the community. But long story short, recent alums also said in 18 and 19 that are going to be part of our program on Saturday, that there's a disconnect between students and the community and obviously from alums. So there's a parallel pattern here. The facts, the facts and the facts, that there is not any community engagement. The community is not more knowledgeable about the achievement gaps. The community is not knowledgeable about the disparate impact on the gifted program, the special ed program, the Title I funding. Those are all obligations of the district, especially since you approved of this man of being a preeminent community leader. I have more to say, and I'll say it next week.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Carmina. Is there anyone else registered, Katie? All right, and we're done with public comment. And we'll move to board comments. Do any of my fellow board members have any comments this evening?
I enjoyed Wednesday's community conversation with Ms. Latour. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, then do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
You want to pass? All right. Meeting adjourned.